I'm Stephanie Wilson and you're listening to Freedom Over Fascism.
What John Green's involvement did was a few amazing things. One, it shined a light on it so that the rest of the community, and frankly, the rest of the state and the nation, found out about this. Two, because John Green's particular title here is well-known and well-regarded, it really hit home for a lot of people who thought, wait a minute, that book is not inappropriate. It was just a good litmus test that something with this policy is way off. And third, and I would say most importantly, it validated the voices in the community that had been speaking out, and it applied pressure, real pressure, for the first time for the Moms for Purity, library board members that were responsible for this policy, who until then had absolutely silenced and ignored the voices speaking out against it.
Freedom Over Fascism is our attempt to raise the alarm about the war radical MAGA Republicans are waging against Americans in Indiana and across the country. This is the second season of our podcast with a brand new name. MAGA is implementing a strategy of voter suppression, gerrymandering, and cruel legislation to take away our freedom and increase their power. MAGA is using fascist tactics, corruption, conspiracy theories, and disinformation to make themselves and their billionaire funders richer and more powerful. They target the most vulnerable among us, but you can be sure that we and our children are targets too, whatever our gender, color, sexual orientation, or location. Across the country, the fascist MAGA party is forcing transgender kids and adults to detransition, leading many to flee their home states and many more to remain and risk their lives. And MAGA-dominated state houses have systematically stripped bodily autonomy for women. MAGA, along with affiliate groups like Moms for Hitler, is banning books. And if they can't ban books, they're shuttering public libraries, defunding public education, and outlawing the teaching of the real history of America. All of this is connected, and it's a war against you and me and all Americans who want to live in a pluralistic democracy. We hope this podcast with our guests from different locations, organizations, backgrounds, and specialties will help draw a realistic picture of what we, our families, our neighbors, and our fellow citizens face. And we hope to provide you with concrete actions to take to refuse the fascism that has moved past our front door and into our metaphorical living room. We all deserve the freedom to thrive, live authentically, and be free from fear and hunger. And we will do everything we can to educate, elect, and empower people who will help us win this fight. I invite you to become a patron at patreon.com/freedomoverfascism to help support my work producing this podcast and feeding my family. You'll find bonus content such as Q and As, news explainers, and other extras that will help you understand our current moment and what actions you can take. Please also smash the subscribe button and leave a review wherever you listen. Today, we're going to tackle an issue that has been getting national attention and has come to a head in Fishers, Indiana. The far-right wing organization that the Southern Poverty Law Center has called an extremist anti-government organization that we'll call Moms for Censorship, and that recently quoted Hitler on their Indiana Chapter's newsletter, captured the library board and instituted a policy that takes young adult literature and removes many of the books from the teen section of the library and places them in the adult shelves. One of those books was The Fault in Our Stars by John Green, who called out the library board to his millions of followers on social media and galvanized the Fishers community, saying, "The Fault in Our Stars has been removed from the YA section in the suburbs of Indianapolis and is now considered a book for adults. This is ludicrous. It is about teenagers, and I wrote it for teenagers. Teenagers are not harmed by reading The Fault in Our Stars. This is such an embarrassment." John Green couldn't be with us today, but we will talk with Fishers City Councilwoman Jocelyn Vare, one of the first Democratic city councilors in the city, who talks to us about the galvanizing effect this library battle has had on Democratic citizens of Fishers. We'll also talk to young adult authors Tracy Richardson and Barbara Shoup in the second segment of our pod. Tracy Richardson is the award-winning author of The Field and Catalyst and is the past president of Luminous Books, a boutique publisher of children's and adult literary fiction. Barbara Shoup is the author of eight books for adults and young adults, including Wish You Were Here and Stranded in Harmony, which won ALA's Best Book for Young Adults Award. She's the James Powell Writer-in-Residency of the Indiana Writers Center and a faculty member of Art Workshop International. My conversations with Jocelyn Vare, which focus on the galvanization of the Fishers community in opposition to the library policy, and with two Hoosier authors who speak about the value of literature to teens and the harm in censoring their reading options, together paint an important picture of the danger radical MAGA extremists pose to our children, their education, and their inner lives. I hope you enjoy our conversation. Welcome to Freedom Over Fascism.
Thank you. Thank you for having me, Stephanie.
I'm so excited to have you because I know that there's a lot going on in your town of Fishers. People in other MAGA-captured states are really familiar with this. Moms for Censorship, we'll call them, we don't need to use their ridiculously inaccurate name, is behind an effort by the library to move young adult literature to the adult section. Can you tell us more about what's been going on, and then we'll go from there?
Sure, perfect. So again, thanks for having me. My community is Fishers, Indiana. We have a population of over 100,000 people, sixth-largest city in the state of Indiana. And we are known for being a smart, vibrant entrepreneurial city that's really guided by amazing growth, guided by our amazing school system, which you will see is part of our story to tell today as well. So I will tell you, I'm a Democrat that serves on the Fisher City Council. Our community has always been run by GOP-controlled until I was elected in 2019. At that point, we had two Democrats elected for the first time in city government. And that's where we stand today. So I set that stage for you, that we have always been considered, Hamilton County, Indiana, a red GOP stronghold. But as the community has grown, it's grown in diversity and Democrats, actually. So I'm really happy to say that today, in the last primary in May, 47% of primary voters, just a few months ago, 47% were Democrats. So we consider ourselves a newly balanced, politically balanced, community. And four years ago, we had 12% Democrats voting in a primary. So that is-
Oh my goodness. Wow.
Right? It's tremendous. So you can see, like, that is the political trajectory of our community. So that sets the stage. I would say after the COVID pandemic, we had many parents that were frustrated with the pandemic in general and how schools were e-learning and students were staying at home. And let's be honest, that was a very difficult, awful time for every household in every community. So that's what started the fire. This has been years in the making, truly. We have had school board disruptions, and the battleground now is our public library board. So to fast forward where we are today, we have had, since January, a new majority in our library board. And that majority has been what we would consider, you know, kind of MAGA-inspired. This is definitely controlled and informed by Moms for Liberty. I like to call them Moms for Purity, is how they've manifested themselves in our community. Starting in January, a new policy was quickly adopted to review every teen book, the teen section of our public library, against a very, very stringent guidelines that included not only sexual content, but, forgive me, bad words, I would say PG-13 bad words, also violence situations. This very stringent policy was adopted and required our librarians to review every single teen book. And what has happened, our librarians are doing the best that they can with this policy, looking page by page for this type of content that, again, the Moms for Purity, majority of our public library board are considering inappropriate for teens. They're reviewing all the books. They've been, as to date, 25% of the books in the teen section have been reviewed, and 1,300 titles have been moved out of the teen collection because they violate this new policy.
Can I ask, can I just like interject? I took a look at the books that have been moved because of this, and it's not just the books that you might think would warn a foul. So we'll hear more about how John Green, author of The Fault in Our Stars, got involved. But this list includes things like The Librarian of Auschwitz. It doesn't include some books that you would expect it to include, but it does include a lot of books that are about the teen experience.
Exactly. So the net was cast very wide. I mean, honestly, if in the collection that's only been a quarter reviewed, over 1,300 titles have been deemed inappropriate, that has to like raise a red flag. Something's off here. The one, if I may, the one title that resonated for me and for my generation as a woman was Judy Blume's Forever.
Oh, yes.
Right? People in my-
Same generation.
Right? Exactly. That has been on the teen shelf for decades, for decades. So now, if I can tell you what happened in Fishers just last week. First of all, citizens have been working, I've been publicly speaking at public library meetings for, gosh, over a year and a half. Citizens have mobilized and spoken out against this for all the good reasons. And I would say the number one reason, of course, we hear, which is absolutely true, is this is a form of censorship. It also discredits a parent for making good choices for their own student. And third and foremost, and this is important, the policy required these 1,300 books so far that violated the policy to be re-shelved, removed, banned from the teen section, and added into the adult fiction section, where there is true adult content. So really, the whole thing became just nonsense because we don't want teens driven to the adult section where there is truly adult content. So that's where we landed. I credit our citizens here in Fishers that have really to express their feelings against this policy. But when the net included John Green's book, The Fault in Our Stars, last week, some citizens shared that information with John Green. John Green, if you don't know, is just a beloved young adult author who is from Indiana and has many titles, but this one in particular is just a beloved book. And thankfully, citizens contacted John Green to let him know that in Fishers, Indiana, his book, written for young adults, was now considered inappropriate for the audience he wrote about and for the audience that he intended. Thankfully, John Green let his voice be heard and reprimanded our public library board. That got national attention and really forever changed the conversation here about this policy.
I bet it really galvanized the folks who were against the policy. And it probably changed at least some surface, on the surface. His book went back into the teen section. But what do you think it means overall? Does it mean that John Green got national attention, so his book goes back and the rest kind of reverts back to the way it was?
We still have a lot of work to do. As of today, the policy is still in place. The review continues. More authors have been speaking out that have had their titles bounced from the teen section and deemed inappropriate for teens. So we are hearing for more authors. But what John Green's involvement did was a few amazing things. One, it shined a light on it so that the rest of the community, and frankly, the rest of the state and the nation, found out about this. Two, because John Green's particular title here is well-known and well-regarded, it really hit home for a lot of people who thought, wait a minute, that book is not inappropriate. It was just a good litmus test that something with this policy is way off. And third, and I would say most importantly, it validated the voices in the community that had been speaking out, and it applied pressure, real pressure, for the first time for the Moms for Purity, library board members that were responsible for this policy, who until then had absolutely silenced and ignored the voices speaking out against it.
Do you think that will be a long-term gain? Or do you think that once the national view is cast aside, that it will go back? Do you think that the citizens of Fishers have gained enough confidence and leverage to take this further?
Yeah, I absolutely do. It has changed the dynamic in our community. And it has made it very obvious that we have a small group of citizens with political aspirations and political motivations. Again, Moms for Purity level, it's politically driven, and that has made citizens just stand up and take notice. I believe this moment in Fishers has really forever changed the dynamic. It has proven to citizens that they have some influence, that they will not be ignored anymore. And I credit John Green for the spark here, but the citizens are moving it forward.
Well, I think that is so important because in all MAGA-captured states, and Indiana in particular, people have for so long felt that their voice just doesn't matter and nothing that they do can change the situation. So they stay home, they don't really agitate at all. And the other side, which I would argue is not conservative at all because they're not trying to conserve democracy or freedom. They are trying to change, radically change, the way the United States is governed. And it gives the people a sense that they do have a say in what happens in their community. How do you think that that will play itself forward as Fishers continues to grow, as the number of Democrats grows, the diversity grows? Do you think this is an inflection point or a little hill in a different trajectory?
Yeah, it's a great question. In Fishers, Indiana, this is a flashpoint. And it has proven that the GOP-led government that we have and the way that they serve the entirety of our community is far too extreme. There's a big gap between their leadership and citizens' desires. And let's be honest, this is how, like, this push and pull, this tugging back and forth, it is how government typically works. But where it broke for our city was that it was the leaders, that, again, the GOP leaders that had all the power, were taking something to a very extreme level and blocking out the citizens' voices. And that was the fault in our library board. They literally shut down the voices of the community. And that's bad government. And I'm here to tell you, as a city councillor, the number one angst point that I hear from citizens is, I deserve to be heard. And citizens, even if something doesn't go their way, if they can absorb that and take that on, as long as their voice is heard and they've been considered. This library board, again, prescribed by Moms for Purity, went too far, went way too far, and then just silenced the community and didn't compromise at all. What's going to happen now, I'm sure, there has to be a compromise. We reached that tipping point.
Right. And not only that, as you said, it's bad government. It's more than $300,000, as I read, to make these changes. And in a town or city government, that's a big chunk.
Right. So I think right now in Fishers, moving forward, Democrats have always been in the minority, so much so that we were called a red community not very long ago. Well, now, as we can demonstrate political balance of our citizenship, we have to come to center because we are going to have flashpoints like this all the time if things are going too extreme, frankly, one direction or another. So this is our moment, my community's moment, to recalibrate and rebalance. And just taking it one important step further, that requires Democrats to add that balance, right? So thank you now, as we move into an election for our municipal offices, we are mobilizing and seeing amazing strength of our Democratic voters saying, this is my time to have our voice. We're not trying to take over the community. We are trying to establish balance. And that's good government. Balance is good government, and only Democrats can bring that.
That's absolutely true. So what else can citizens in Fishers or in another community like yours, what can they do to influence the outcome or the balance of your community? And let me just say, you are running again in the elections in November. So at the end, I will give you the chance to direct people to your campaign. But how can normal, everyday citizens who believe in freedom of parents to help choose what their kids are able to read and all the other freedoms that are at stake, what can they do to be effective in their advocacy?
That's a great question. That answer is to make sure citizens vote every chance they get, every primary, every election in November, to vote. And my community has had very low voter turnout. And so that is the number one thing that we are trying to inform our citizens. Understand, see what's happening in your community and understand the bridge, the most direct bridge for improvement is voting every chance you get. We're also trying to convince our citizens who maybe have been quiet and thinking like, oh, I might be the only Democrat on my street, to stand with confidence and say, no, 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 we need your leadership. We need your voice here. Do that in a way that works for you personally and your family. But have confidence because you're serving the community when you speak up. And that can mean speaking up at a hot mic in a public meeting or just talking to your neighbor in a mailbox.
I think that a lot of times when people don't vote, particularly in places like Indiana, it's, as we said before, it's because they feel like their voices don't matter. And also, they don't necessarily know where and how because they may be checked out because they thought nothing that they could do would have an impact. How are you addressing the fact that a lot of people just don't know where and when to have their voices heard?
Right. So just civics 101 is, I think, how we began, just the basic understanding of voting, who you get to vote for. Our library board, for example, are actually appointed. They're not elected. So we're trying to explain who the elected bodies are that make these appointments and make sure that people understand literally how their local government works.
So you're running. Can you tell people how they can learn more about you, if they want to help your campaign, if they want to volunteer, if they want to help out this effort? How can they get in touch with you and the groups that are on your site?
Yes. So once again, my name is Jocelyn Vare, and I'm an at-large member of the Fisher City Council. Everything, you can find me everywhere as Jocelyn Vare for Fishers. And I'm also going to share with you something that we're really excited about. I am running for reelection, but in Fishers, Indiana, for the first time, we've had the most Democratic municipal candidates ever, twice as many as before. We have almost every municipal office contested with amazing candidates. And that has been strategic, that has been smart, that has been, I'm here to tell you, years in the making of hard work recruiting people and training them. And what is remarkable, so I'm going to steer you to all of our Fisher's candidates because together, we have said as new leaders, we're here to make a big difference in Fishers and add balance for the first time. So I'm really proud of these other brave candidates that are stepping forward and working really hard to get elected and serve Fishers better in November.
Well, that's awesome. And as you know, who's your victory alliance in this podcast? We have discussed over and over again how important it is to contest every single race, whether it's at the local level, the state level, the federal level, because uncontested MAGA GOP make laws that affect everybody.
Yes.
And here we see it playing out at the city level. And it's so exciting to see that where you didn't have people contesting every seat before, you do. And that takes time, and that takes effort, and that takes brave people, as you said. And I'm so excited to see what Fishers can do and how this changes how the city is going forward.
Right. And how local government will serve our citizens better. And I'm very encouraged, I want to thank John Green, but truly, most of all, we have had some citizens really step up and work and spend time and energy. And it's that engagement that has brought us to this very important moment. So I thank them, and there are so many people from every corner of our community that are now getting engaged. And that means not only paying attention, but taking action, and they're going to be voting.
Thank you so much for coming and talking to us. And I want to let our listeners know that we have two authors coming up who are young adult authors, and you're going to get a chance to hear from them on young adult literature and why it's so important. And these are Indiana authors. So between Councilwoman Jocelyn Vare and our authors to come, I think we have a lot of, all the perspectives that are really important. So thank you for coming on.
Thank you for having me.
Welcome to our second segment of today's podcast. And now I have Barbara Shoup and Tracy Richardson with me, two authors of young adult literature. And first, we're going to talk with Barbara Shoup, who is a leader in the Indiana writing community. Barbara, can you talk to us a little bit about the importance of literature to teens and young adults? And also let us know about the books that you've written.
I will start with a story, if you don't mind.
Please.
I was doing an author visit. This was some time ago. There was a class set of my book that's called Stranded in Harmony. And in that book, the main character is engaged in a sexual relationship with his girlfriend. He's a senior in high school. And he, at some point, gets worried because he thinks that she's pregnant. So we were discussing the story in the classroom. And it was an interesting spirited discussion. And some kids were saying, I don't think that should be, I don't think there should be sex. And it wasn't explicit sex. It was just that they were having it, right? I don't think that should be in books for kids because it's like you're condoning it. And then other kids didn't agree with that. And at the end of the, at the end of the class, just right before the bell rang, a girl in the back raised her hand. She hadn't said a word the whole time. And she said, I just want to say that when I read this book, she said, I'm pregnant. And when I read this book, it helped me understand why my boyfriend acted the way he did. And the bell rang, and she was gone. And I thought, that is, that is why these books are so important. Because it's a way for young people to, number one, know they're not alone, know that whatever is happening to them is happening to other people their age as well. And might not be as bad as they think. It's a way for them to sort of try out things by way of characters. In other words, they don't have to have a sexual relationship with their boyfriend. They can read about it, and then they can think, I don't know, is this a good idea? Or isn't this a good idea? And I really do think that in so many ways, it is helpful to them because it puts them in a situation that they can relate to. There are moral issues to be decided, and they're smart enough to see what those moral issues are without naming them and to, you know, to come to conclusions about those things. I think sometimes- know, to come to conclusions about those things, I think sometimes adults would be surprised that they come to the conclusions, you know, that you would want them to to come to, more times than not. I I feel that people who read fiction, any kind of fiction, are more compassionate than others, because when you read fiction, you have entry to to a person's head who is not you, right? And and so we all present, whatever we present to the world is such a small piece of ourselves, and can often be the opposite of who we are inside. But we don't have the courage to be that person, or we're hiding that person for some reason. And so when you have access to the inner life of other people, it makes you regard the real people in your life differently. You know, you might think, well, this is how he's acting now. But what if he's scared? You know, what if he thinks I don't like him? Or, you know, it just gives you more options for thinking about the way people behave. And that's, that's true, whether you're an adult, or whether whether you're a young person. And I do, I do so strongly feel that young adult literature is really an important factor, or can be, in helping kids understand the world they're living in.
Wow, I think that sums it up really concisely. Tracy, do you want to talk about your books and and how you think about young adult literature?
Absolutely. And that, Barbara, is right on. And just to
Thank you.
dovetail on that, as authors, and I was also president of a small children's publishing company, we talked to to teens all the time about our books. And they they do tell us frequently about how important it was for them to read about those topics. And it helps them navigate the world. They feel empowered. They make more informed choices. They feel seen and understood. I like to say that fiction isn't real, but it is true. And that especially when it comes to real issues that impact teens, reading about those difficult topics is a non-threatening way for them to experience those trauma and consequences without actually having to do it. And it also gives them an opportunity, like what you were doing with that classroom, for them to talk with their peers, talk with other adults about those topics, and work through them. And I think it empowers them to make better choices, to be better prepared when they do encounter those situations. And like you said, Barbara, it gives them empathy, understanding, they don't feel isolated. And because of that, fiction is a great teacher. Writing about stories, you know, difficult issues like drinking, or divorce, or sex, or self-destructive behavior, doesn't cause them to behave in that, that those things. But it gives them tools and skills to, like I said, I think that when I was writing my books, my children were 15 at the time. So they were in high school, my nieces were in high school, their friends were in high school. And I asked them, what topics would you want to see in a book that would help you in navigating the world? Drinking was number one. Because even if they aren't drinking, there are kids in high school who are. And we know that that's true. And for them to see it in a book and understand what's happening. And in my particular book, there, so I included that, and there was drinking. But it's not condoned. It's actually goes through all the issues that this person deals with because of the fact that they were drinking. Divorce, another thing that they deal with. So maybe not as controversial an issue, but something that that kids can then explore. If they're not going through divorce, maybe a friend of their family is going through divorce, and they can explore those those feelings and try and work through it and see how another person is working through it. And then I also included a sexual assault, because that happens in to teens. We hear about it in the news at high schools. And so I included that in my book. And I wanted to read two quotes by Joseph Campbell that I really love. The first one is, "The big problem of any young person's life is to have models to suggest possibilities." And then also, "We have not even to risk the adventure alone, for the heroes of all time have gone before us." So the characters in fiction are on a hero's journey, good fiction, literature that we're talking about here. They're dealing with issues, and they persevere, and they come out better and stronger, maybe not unharmed. But it gives kids someone to look to, to try and emulate, and see that they can persevere, no matter what they're dealing with at the time. So that's kind of my perception on the importance of of literature for teens.
You know, one other thing, too, I think that kids don't necessarily want to discuss their own lives and the problems that they have. When you're talking about a book, so often, especially when you know the kid, and I, you know, taught high school, and I would, I would know, you know, that they were discussing that book from personal experience because of what was going on in their lives. But they didn't feel embarrassed by that. They didn't, didn't feel like they were talking about themselves, even though they were. So in a lot of ways, it serves as sort of a, I don't, not therapy, of course, but but just a way of of sort of getting things off your chest, or 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 looking at things. And in the discussion, and sometimes somebody will say something that might surprise them and make them think, oh, that could be true for me, too. And I just, well, I am just such a fan, doesn't even cover it. I mean, I, I really, I believe in fiction. And I think you're right. It isn't, it isn't real, but it's true. The good fiction is true. It has truth at its core, for sure.
I think that the people who try to keep books away from teens, I have a 15 year old, I think they vastly underestimate the capacity of teenagers to understand nuance, to separate themselves from a story, and to be able to think through all of the different implications of what they're reading, whether it's a literary book, or, you know, an adventure, a young adult adventure, like The Hunger Games, or where the teenagers are the protagonists, and they are the ones empowered to save the world. Right? And for kids who often feel so powerless, those kinds of books can make them, you know, feel what it might be like if if they were the ones in charge. And I really think that the people who are keeping these books away from kids, they don't know any teenagers, or aren't engaging in an honest way with them.
I think people are fearful. You know, we all want to protect our children. We love our children. But I think what a lot of people don't realize is, by the time your kid gets to high school, you have had the influence, the primary influence that you're going to have on that kid, by the way that you raised him. And I think it's sad that people don't realize that they can trust their children to make decisions based on, almost always based on their upbringing, whatever those decisions might be. And so I feel like in a lot of cases, people work against themselves, because in being so fearful, they they sort of make these forbidden things more interesting to their kids. And I don't really think that they are accomplishing what they, you know, what they hope and want to accomplish, which is to protect their children. They're not protecting their children.
And to dovetail on that, restricting access to books with difficult topics doesn't protect children, because they deal with difficult topics every single day.
Yes.
You can't avoid it. I mean, at school, even if you homeschool, plus, in the media, there's, unless you just keep them in a complete bubble, they're, they're experiencing this. And if you don't give them access to this information, you're, you're restricting their knowledge. You're keeping them ignorant. And that means they can't make good choices when they are dealing with those things.
Right. And, you know, you could talk to your kids about books that you worry about, and read them together. You know, why not? What do you, what do you really have to lose by by doing that? And and also, I mean, there's always the question, why is it that you feel that you have the right to do that for other people's children?
Exactly.
You know, you don't want people doing that to you or your children. So it seems only fair that you wouldn't do it to someone else.
Right. And that's the thing, Barbara, is that everyone has the right to choose what they want to expose their children to, whether we agree with it, or they agree with us. But they don't have the right to restrict what we want to expose our children to.
Right.
In a public setting, or in a public school, a public library, that's
Yeah.
not okay.
Yeah. No, it is. It is really not okay. You know, you could go to the library, and you could say, not that one today, honey. And that's, that's your option. I don't think it's necessarily a good plan, personally, but that's me. Everyone should get to choose.
A lot of the books that so far have been moved, and it's only a fraction, they've only reviewed a fraction of all the ones slated to review, they are award winners, multiple award winners. And children's, recognize children's classics by educators, experts in children's literature, and experts in library science.
You know, no matter where they were, or what their situation was, COVID was a very traumatic experience. And one of the ways that they will be working it out for a really long time, I think, is through literature.
That's what literature does, when it's, when it's working at its best. Young adult literature is is essentially just coming of age literature, which has been with us forever, you know, just like some adult books are for kids, too. I never would have said to my kids, no, that's an adult book, because I figured they would get out of it what they got out of it. And they might come back and read it again in, you know, 20 years and and have a different idea. But, you know, it's, reading is reading. And it's, I just can't think that it's, it's bad for you
Yeah.
in any kind of way.
No. When we were growing up, there wasn't such a thing as young adult literature.
No. Catcher in the Rye would be a YA book now.
Correct.
You know, because it's, and what it is, is a difference, I think, there's no, you know, rule to this. But I think, I think YA is, has that raw, wondering tone, right? That you are, it's happening right now. It's happening in this teenage perception. I mean, when you are a teenager, it's your job to be self, self-absorbed. I mean, you just are by nature. And so, you know, the viewpoint of it is, is that. And so there's this urgency to it that makes it wonderful to read, really. The first YA book of mine, which was also on the list of most 100 banned books in 1995, Wish You Were Here, I didn't think of it as a YA book. I didn't even know there was such a thing. And it was sort of just right after John Green's first novel was published. So it was a kind of new thing. And when I was writing it, it really was about divorce. And I was shocked by the effects of divorce on my high school students, and how many of them were really grieving for lost families. I didn't really understand it, because I grew up in the 60s, and nobody got divorced then. I, I thought of it as a book that I would want their parents to read, because I would want them to understand what what happens to kids, you know, when when their parents get divorced, because they are often so caught up in the process and the pain, and the sorrow, and the grief, and the anger, that that they can't really see anything other than themselves. And I wanted them to see what it felt like to be kind of pitted against each other, and just sad, 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 sad. And and so, yeah, I mean, it's, it's a book that I know adults have read it and liked it, because I've Did you?
I loved it.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. I just love books so much, it's hard for me to, I don't know, think, what is wrong with people who don't love books?
Well, I think that's kind of the answer, is that people who don't love books and read a wide variety of books have such a narrow focus.
Yes. Yeah.
Right.
That's right.
And the books, it's also a pretty uninformed point of view, right? If you look at that list, in particular in Fishers, you've got, you know, the Faulkner stars, right? You've got Librarian of Auschwitz.
Yeah.
You've got Forever, like, We Passed Around on the Bus.
Of course.
Right. But you don't have
Go out and have sex based on reading it, right?
No.
Yeah.
Right. I was, by the time I was in seventh grade, I was reading adult romance literature, right? I was a, I was a, an AP student, but I was reading, you know, romance. Did I go out and have sex because I was reading about it? No.
No.
Right. It's, it's a, it's a ridiculous thing. But, you know, some of the, the novels that are really a much wider perspective, don't make it to the list, like, you know, Heartstopper, or some of the things that have recently been made into movies, all of Rainbow Roil, or David Leviton.
Yeah. They might be getting on the list. Well, one of Davids is on the list. Well, but that's, but it's not done. The process of review is, is not. And that, so that's another thing, to just touching that. So John Green excellently spoke out about his book being on the, the list to be moved. And so they went back and reevaluated it, and decided to move it back. But most authors are not John Green. And and it also goes to the point that if they made a mistake in this book, they're not reading these books themselves. And their, their criteria cast an extremely wide net, and it's catching things that don't belong in their, my book, I'm sure when they get to it, is not going to make the cut. It's going to be moved to the adult section. There's no question.
Well, can kids not take books out from the adult?
They can.
That's crazy, then.
They're still available, but but it's not. They're not in the teen section.
I, I really want to do a shout out to librarians everywhere, because it's, it's a bad time for them.
And they've always had a difficult job, and they do it
Yes.
for love.
Yes.
Not for money. And to become the fulcrum of everything that our country is debating right now, which I won't call a culture war, because it's not.
Yeah. I mean, they're threatening to send people to jail over these kinds of things. And how, what can you expect from a librarian at that point? That's got to be, we're going to lose them all, is what's going to happen, probably. It scares me half to death.
Me, too. Me, too.
It's kind of like what is happening with physicians.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Physicians, teachers.
Yeah.
All the things that we should be focused on, who who are there in the service of other people.
Right.
Right. Who who were trained to practice their craft and can't, can't.
Most of them are there for absolutely the right reasons, which is they want to help kids or adults. Jocelyn says that John Green actually really helped galvanize the population.
He did.
Which is so exciting. To make people believe that their voice matters is as important a role as any in these days. So I thank him, I thank you guys for being on and talking about the role of literature. I think sometimes we focus so much on the politics of any situation that we forget to focus on the real life impacts. And as I said, I have a 15 year old. They are far more nuanced and mature than anyone really gives them credit for, except perhaps their parents or their teachers.
Thank you.
It's been a very large pleasure for me to talk to you, and thanks for spending your time.
My pleasure.
Take care.
Thank you for listening to Freedom Over Fascism. Please remember to become a patron for extra content at patreon.com/freedomoverfascism, and subscribe to the pod wherever you listen.